On behalf of the council, I'd like to thank everyone for attending this virtual meeting this evening. And we're now go on to the agenda. The first item on the agenda is apologies for absence. Have we any apologies? None at all?
Sorry Chair, and we've got one from councillor Moreland.
Oh yes, councillor Moore, yes, I've read that mail. Thank you very much. Any others? No? Okay. Item two, disclosure of interest. To deal with any disclosure by members of any disposable pecuniary interests and interests other than pecuniary interests as defined under the Seaford Tank Council Code of Conduct and the Local Tourism Act 2011 in relation to matters on the agenda. Any at all? No? Okay, thank you. There's no public participation, so we can go straight on to item four. The Golf in the View Draft Budget Report, which is exempt, but I think we've got some copies of it that came out with the minutes. Okay. So. We're in fairly difficult times at the moment, as you all appreciate, and obviously we've got to look very carefully at the expenditure that we're undergoing in the council at the moment. So the budget's been put together with that in mind. And also the fact that although we're coming out of lockdown at the moment, we've gone back into lockdown in another name. So you know, we're probably no better off at the moment. And we don't know what the government's going to decide in their meeting this evening about the three tiers that we have been subjected to. Of course, we've fallen into tier two, which makes life very difficult for any sort of activity that's to do with restaurants and organisations like that. So you know, we're really up against it at the moment. So you know, I welcome any comments you've got to make about the budget. Any? Yes, Karen.
Thank you Chair. Can I just start by saying, giving a little bit more information about things that have changed since the report was written, since we've had community services. Community Services Committee actually made £75,000 worth of savings off their budget. And so at the moment, the overall council budget stands at 22.5%, which is an extra £20.68 on a band D council tax per year. It's £112.51 per year. That's just how it stands at the moment. Of course, this committee might change the budget, FNGP might change the budget, council might change the budget. So all of that could change. We've had a bit of bad news today that the band D base is likely to go down. It's not a normal case for it to go down, but I believe it did last year too. And they're saying it's because of the collection rate, presumably because of the coronavirus. And it makes a difference of about £0.50 at the moment on the band D base, £0.50 more on the band D base. And I just wanted to say that all of the budgets have been set very prudently. Expenditure, everything that we know about is in there. Income, we've been a little bit more conservative with and we've, we've tried, it's very difficult, as you said Chair, that at the moment, how to plan and how to budget for things in the future with the lockdown situation. But we've tried to do it on a basis that if we are, if it's better than this, hopefully we'll have more money left at the end of the year to put into the general reserve. So for instance, we haven't budgeted much money, any money for functions at the view. But if we do get them, they will make a profit, it will be a bonus and it will be able to go into the general reserve. If anybody's any questions, I'm willing to answer them. Thank you.
I think you might note in the budget report that we're looking at quite a deficit next year at the Golf in the View due to the current circumstances with Covid. I'm afraid that's unavoidable. If Covid changes and we are able to open up more and have more functions and things like that, if, then obviously that situation would change, but at the moment, that's where it is. I'd like to hold off on looking at the view at the moment until the General Managers' Report under item seven, if everybody's okay with that. So we can look at that in quite some detail. So at the moment, we're just looking at the, at the budget itself. So. Have you got no more, no more questions on it? Can I, nobody's got their hands up? Can I therefore ask, are we asked to accept this report? Yes? Somebody like to propose that we accept the budget? Councillor Edson, seconded? Anybody like seconding that? Councillor Cash, all those in favour please? Right to. I can show, yes? Anybody against? Any abstentions? Okay, we take that as carried for the time being. The next item we go on to is the Head Greenkeepers' Report. And I'd like to ask Simon to just bring us up to date on that.
Sorry Chair, can I just quickly ask, was that the committee voting on all four recommendations of the budget report? Just so I know for the minute, sorry.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, sorry, thank you.
Great, everybody voting on order for recommendations. Sorry, should have said that.
Thank you.
You're quite right. Thank you. I'm glad you're there. Okay, so Simon.
Good evening, everyone. Pleased to see you all. I won't go over too much in detail. I welcome any questions. Just a slight update. I'm pleased to say during lockdown, we have experienced a much happier and better use of the golf course by members of the public. We didn't suffer any damage. We didn't have any trouble with anyone. We didn't have to ask anyone to leave. It was much better. We put some additional signage up, so all in all, we're really pleased with how the public and people have used the site for walking and exercise. It's gone really well in that sense. Irrigation works has begun. The new pump house is in position. The base work's all done and the pipe works are all excavated. The old systems are now decommissioned, but due to Covid, the next stage requires a team of people to manoeuvre and level and install the new pumps, which are sitting ready to go. But I think I'm waiting to hear this week, now lockdown is coming to an end tomorrow, as to the date that they'll arrive to do that. But all the work so far has been carried out by one person at a time, just for their own safety and that's the procedures they've taken. So hopefully this week we can progress. There's been no fees charged for any work they're doing. I believe they're doing a full charge at the end. So I can update on that as and when it happens. Our new greenkeeper Craig, he's done really well. He's fitted in excellently. He's completed a month now. He's a great addition to the team. So we're pleased that we held out. It was this, it was back in August that we lost Ben. And as of yesterday was the first day we had four people in, in the team working, which was nice. Yesterday and today, and now I'm going off for two weeks. But the, the team were all right. So they're, they know what they're doing and I trust each and every one of them. So golf course is in good hands. And ask any, welcome any questions?
Questions from anybody? I think we should give a big thanks to the, the greenkeepers for the excellent work they're doing. It's, it's also helpful to know that there's not been so much damage on the course this time as there was perhaps in the last night. So perhaps the notice is in that that we put out beginning to have some kind of effect. So we're asked to note the Greenkeepers' Report. Somebody like to propose that we note it? Councillor Cash, seconded? Councillor Edson, everybody in favour? Yes? Okay, that's noted. All right. Now we can go on to the Golf Professionals' Report, which is exempt. Is it possible to put it up on the screen, Georgia? Okay, we need to discuss the report. Yes, questions? Come on people, we must ask some questions about it.
Trying to find it to read it.
All right, yeah. I've got it on a computer, but it's half a mile away, so I can't read it very well.
It doesn't come up very well on my tablet. I don't know if it's a tablet or the blooming, the school, you know, the Serus. It's so slow.
Yeah. Well, I've got the report up on Serus.
Oh, hang on, I've got it here. I have read it. There it is.
All right, questions then? Karen, did you have a question?
No, sorry.
All right, I thought you'd indicated. Fraser, could you elaborate perhaps for us, please?
Yeah, good evening, everybody. There's, well, I mean, everything's pretty much in there that we needed in there. I'm happy to take any questions if anybody's not understanding any of the pieces in there. I think we're like every business going at the moment. We're in that position where we're just desperate for these restrictions to disappear, so we can actually crack on and get going with trying to rebuild our monetary side of things. We were doing so well up until this lockdown. I don't think anybody expected golf to go into that, especially outside. But I think it's a shame we couldn't just carry on. I think we wouldn't have been far off income budget for golf if we'd had a half decent winter, but sadly that wasn't the case. So we've got to sort of kick on again from tomorrow. So let's hope the weather improves more than it does look like the end of this week. So fingers crossed from next week, we could do good. Course looks fantastic. So we've got a great product there. So fingers crossed the winter holds up.
How's the new rules affecting the number of golfers that can go around at one time? Is there any effect on that?
No, it's been, it's exactly the same as it was before lockdown. So that shouldn't cause too many problems with regards to, you know, tee times and the way the guys are booked before. So they should all know the rules, especially the members, because they've been doing it for the last few months. So we shouldn't have any major problems with that side of things.
Okay. Councillor Evenden, you have a question?
It wasn't really a question. The, the report is really, really well laid out and really sort of clear options. So that's, I think that's why there's not actually much questioning on it, because it's so clear and comprehensive. But I did want to say I was up there about a week ago and the course is just looking gorgeous up there. It's absolutely beautiful and it just looks so well cared for. And I think that when we come out of these particular restrictions, you're going to get a lot of, a lot of custom, because it really does look top notch. So I wanted to thank you for that.
That's down to our greenkeepers, I think. They're well done. Councillor Cash?
I was just querying. I presume the golfers aren't allowed to go in to have a drink after they've been on around? If they don't have a meal, is that right?
Well, they can, I think you can have a, you can have a coffee or you can have a soft drink. If anybody wants alcoholic drink, they have to have a full substantial meal, as we've been trying for the last week to find out what that means. It's gone from a Scotch egg to sitting at a table with knife and fork. So we don't quite, we still don't know really what that means. The, yes, the, what I have to be careful of is when the golfers are inside changing rooms and things like that, technically they shouldn't really be mingling together in groups. So I'm going to keep an eye on that. I only allow one person in the shop at any one time and the master mandatory inside. So again, very similar restrictions. The only difference to the restrictions is the mingling inside before the lockdown. So we'll just have to keep an eye on that. But generally they'll, we'll just use the facilities and they'll go, they'll go to the toilet and then leave. They're not using the changing room as changing room, so there shouldn't be anybody hanging around in there. So.
But they can sit together having a coffee?
I think you can only have two, I think they've got to be in the same household or social bubble to stay inside. So it's not easy, no, no. Obviously, you know, if there's people in the same family, they can go in. It's, it's really restricting for this, the hospitality business as a whole. I mean, even, even places that are food led restaurants even, it's restricting for those guys as well, you know.
So we're in a difficult position of having to check whether people are family members before we allow them in there in any kind of group?
Yeah, the, the majority of people in, certainly in Brighton where I live, they're asking for a disclaimer to be put in most bars and restaurants to say that they are part of the same bubble or family. So basically it's taking the pressure off policing it as, as an owner of a, of a business. That puts it on the actual customer itself. So if somebody came and checked and they're not, they would be the ones being prosecuted, not the actual owners of the bar. So a disclaimer seems to be the way forwards with a lot of people. Certainly, certainly here anyway.
Thank you.
I think this is, this is going to come up again on the view actually in quite some detail. And certainly I anticipate that something from Craig and also from Karen on that particular subject and on the view itself. And I know in the, in your report, you've put in a request for £10,000 for an additional member of staff to join your team.
That was in the budget report, yeah.
In the budget? Okay, and also that. Well, I mean, at the moment, it's a very difficult situation. I'd really like to save that £10,000 if possible by deferring that for the time being.
It was actually in the budget report, Mark. That's not in my golf report. That's all, that was in the.
Okay, I know that, but it's part of the golf activity, isn't it?
Yeah, sure. Sorry, I thought we'd got, you'd passed through the budget report. I thought that was the.
Okay, well, can we be quite clear on that? That £10,000, it can't be used until such times as I believe that we're going to look at your, your contract again anyway, until that's been resolved. Is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, so there's a safeguard there actually for that particular sum of money. I mean, I'd like to see it struck out from the budget at the time being until such times you're in a position to reinstate it, if you don't mind.
Well, it was, it was something that I'd been asked to put a business plan together for. It was something that was approved at the beginning of last year and then was taken away. It's something that I've been asking for for quite a while, but you know, it's, it's something, will be one of my first discussions with the Newtown clerk, Adam, with regards to our conversations, with regards to my contract. So you know, that's, it's something that if you look at, you know, you only have to look up the road, there's, you have, you know, probably five members of staff doing my job. So, you know, at some point, especially this year, and I know everybody's been under pressure this year, but there's a point where you've got someone here that I am single point of failure. If I was to have, God forbid, something happen to me tomorrow, there's not somebody that could step in and do what I'm doing at the minute. And that's half, that's half the problem. And I've been lucky in the 16 years I've been here, I've never not been there when I've had to be, which has been only by luck more than judgment. So it's, it's some thing that, and this is something I know is at completely the wrong time with everything else going on. But again, if I have, I had to, if I have Corona in my household, sorry, my internet connection's not great. So sorry if I'm jumping in and out. You know, with, with everything going on, there's nobody to step in and do my position. So it's, it's a very difficult situation for everybody. So I would like to keep it in there, but I'm not, I'm under no obligations that it's going to be a difficult, tricky part to go through. You know, we've worked absolutely beyond belief this summer just to try and get back onto budget. And it was only this lockdown that's really quashed us. And you know, we were a month down in budgets. Well, month and a half down in the first closed down. And we'd actually got the money back with two less forms of income to actually get, to try and get that money back with a very skeleton staff. That goes on the golf, on the golf course side as well.
Okay, well, I mean, my point of coming in asking for that to be rescinded is that it could make a further reduction in air preset this year. Not an awful lot, but certainly a further reduction. You know, and we're trying to get the preset down as much as we possibly can at the moment because of the effect it's going to have on our residents. So, you know, yes, Georgia?
I'm just going to say, Chair, if I may, obviously we did, the committee voted on this at the last item. So we now, we can't change that now. But obviously as, as you discussed, that will form part of the review of the contract, which is, you know, best practice there, I think. So, you know, like you say, you have got that safeguard of making sure we're looking at the whole operation together and not kind of jumping the gun with anything. But that has been voted on now. So this committee certainly can't change what's happened.
I accept that. That's fine. The other, the other point was that we were looking at the, the actual cost of the, of membership etc. Is that also in that budget item? Fraser?
The cost of membership is, I think that is, it was in the budget position, wasn't it? Yeah, yeah. So it's trying to keep everybody happy there with regards to, obviously they've lost a month of play now. But we obviously don't want to start giving money back. But I think anybody who's put up with this year as membership wise, if we, if we maintain their costs, it's not going to, you know, hopefully we'll retain a lot more by just, it's more of a benefit. And then any new members, we will charge them a little bit more, but obviously give them the, the facility of 15 to 12, which hopefully will bring in some new members come January.
Right, and we're keeping that cost the same, yes?
That the, for the new members, it'll be slightly higher. We'll, we'll add in addition to that. And I think that way we can appease everybody, if that's such a thing, with regards to golfers, but I think we'll try. I think moving forwards, that membership numbers are good. And I think this year has showed us some, something quite interesting with regards to visitors and how much money they actually bring in over the year. So doing the statistics, it's good to have a very fine balance between membership and public golfers, because ultimately that's what we are. We are a public golf course. I don't want to get rid of the membership by any means, but I think that's, that's an important part of the golf course. But also it's, it's a balance to get maximum income from any, you know, one person visiting the golf course.
Councillor Cash?
I see from the figures that we seem to compare very favorably with lots of other golf courses in, in around the area. And I think it's a good idea that this year, taking into account that we want the loyalty of the local players and to attract outside players as well, that we keep them at a very reasonable rate, which they're good value. And I think it's a good practice to actually maintain them as, as you've got them, so that we can build on that loyalty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think so.
I think we've done this thing the wrong way around. I think we should have done the budget after we'd had the discussions, but it's already done and we've already agreed it. So we relieve that as it is at the moment. And we leave it up to the town clerk and Fraser to come to some agreement on the contract in the future. So a bit of work for you there, Adam. Okay, we've got three recommendations actually. Unless there's any more questions or queries? No? We've got three recommendations, which is to note the contents of the report, to approve limited membership numbers to a maximum of 300 for 2021, 22, and to approve continuing the 15 months of the price of travel offer for new members. The only perhaps thing there is item number two, to limit the maximum to 300. What's their membership at the moment?
We.
Yes, Fraser?
We had, yeah, 270 at the moment. So we've got a bit of leeway there before we would have to look at it.
Do you think there's a? Do you think there's a possibility we get more than 300 members?
Hope, it would be a nice, nice problem to have. At the moment, membership generally in golf courses and golf clubs is going sort of, are going up. I think with this year's financially, how difficult it is for everybody spending out that kind of money in January, in February or April in a big chunk might be difficult. So I think maybe some more people will be paying as they go. So we've, we've had them this year that were members last year and have, they've been in the vulnerable category. So they've only been out maybe a few times this year. So that's going to be, I think, similar moving into next year, again, depending on what restrictions there are or aren't in place at that point.
Okay. Is there any method that we could have the members perhaps paying every month on direct debit or something like that? Has everybody, anybody considered that at the moment?
Yeah, they, there is that available. It has been for probably the last five or six years now. There's a six monthly direct debit available.
It's that easiest of burden a little bit, doesn't it? Okay, any other questions then on, on the Golf Report? Okay, could we have somebody then to, to retake the three items together? Everybody happy with that? Yes? Have somebody then to propose that we, that we set the three recommendations? No? Nobody wants to?
You've got councillor Evenden, sorry, proposing it.
I can't, she disappeared. I can't see her. Oh, there you are. Hi, right, councillor Evenden, seconded by councillor Rahner Mahida. All those in favour? Yes? Anybody against? Any abstentions? Okay, that's carried. So now we can go on to the most contentious item, the Golf in the View. So can we put that report up, please, Georgia? I'd like to ask Craig first of all to give us an overview.
All right, thank you, Mark. Good evening, everybody. In all honesty, the report that you've just read has been overtaken, if you like, by the announcement of tier two restrictions. This, this report was based looking into January and February and how we can save money. Whereas I think it's much more important to actually discuss what we do from here on in with the restrictions, probably starting tomorrow. And there's been also, I don't know if you saw an email yesterday with three, with another kind of report plus some figures that Karen's put together based on that and on the restrictions. And I think that's probably where we should be looking. You know, from tomorrow instead of from January, which the report states. If you haven't seen it, sorry, just bringing it up online. There is decisions to be made whether we close the view, open it four days a week, or open it seven days a week with very, very restricted staff and menus. And it all comes down, I'm afraid, to finance. I don't, did you see, did you all receive the email from Karen this afternoon? Or maybe you haven't had a chance to read?
Well, Karen did send us an email earlier in the evening. So you'll probably find it in your email box. And she's laying out some figures there that we put together at the moment. So Karen?
I'm happy to go through it, Chair.
Yes, please.
Basically, because of tier two, it means that, as we've mentioned earlier, that you can only go out and socialise with someone in your same household. And the clientele that we tend to have at the view tend to be friends getting together for lunch and golfers getting together after a game of golf. In general, golfers don't always have a full meal. They might just want a drink. But they can't do that now with the people that they've played golf with unless they stay outside, which is obviously not ideal for winter. So the costings that I've done, basically what, how they work out is that in October, we were fully open and we lost £11,660 in the month. That includes the loan and the loan is about eight thou, well, it is £8,748. In November, we've done quick calculations today, thank you to the rest of the finance team. And we've managed to get some figures for November and we've lost a very, very similar amount, £11,655. During November, we were open for four days, but we also had more staff working because obviously they had to close down. And then already the staff making a few preparations for opening up again. If in December we remained closed and we didn't open, I think you've all had the email that said that we haven't, we're not planning to open tomorrow. We're waiting for a view of the committee tonight. Because if we, if the view remains closed and all staff are furloughed, that loss will drop by about £2,500 to £9,000. If the view was to try and make, to break even on what was expected, it would have to increase October's figures by 15%. And managers think that's really, really unlikely. It's more likely that October's figures will be a lot less. Just on a comparison to last year, October, January and March, we received very, very similar income. February was 35%. February was 35% less than that. So if you consider what we took this October, it's reasonable to assume that if the situation was the same, which isn't, then January and March would be similar to October. So it's October is like the baseline that I've worked on. If we only got 50% income, as much income as we got in October, we'd lose £19,000 that month. And if we only got 75%, we'd lose £14, nearly £15,000 that month. So it is quite significant. And because of that, because of the finances, I would recommend that we close the view until either we get the tier lowered or households are allowed to mix inside. Or, my screen's gone off, or the percentage of the furlough is reduced. Because at the moment, we get an 80% furlough. And if it drops to 60, that might make a whole different ballgame. And at the moment, as I say, we get 80%. So I think we would need to reconsider then. I think the only thing that we need to consider, and I know it's being talked about between people, is that the loss of reputation for the view closing, the loss of customers for the view closing. And I think it's got to be weighed up against that, basically. But I'm happy to answer any questions.
Craig, do you want to add anything to that?
Oh, well, just that obviously, nobody here wants to close. Everybody's worked so hard since reopening in July. And the business was bouncing back very well, even under the table restrictions that we had. So it's pretty gutting to all of us to even be considering this, especially at Christmas when we should be packed. But I suppose it is what it is. We have to look after and protect the council finances. Maybe a compromise of just opening at weekends could be looked at. I don't know the finance of that. It's very difficult to work out with no revenue.
Councillor Evidens?
Yeah, I mean, I looked at the options that Karen's put forward and what she's saying makes absolute sense that at the moment, it's more economical to keep it closed. That is, as a result of the tiers, as a result of COVID, and a little bit a result of everything is unexpected. Nobody knows. We could go up a tier or we could go down a tier. We don't know. So it's this complete, we know less now than we did at the beginning of lockdown, really, because we don't know what the next stage is gonna be. And we don't know how clear the government's going to be on its advice. So I think that Karen's, what Karen's suggesting is correct. I'd just like to make a point about the loss of reputation. I think if we were just closing because we couldn't manage, that's a loss of reputation. But I think because this is related to COVID, the layout of the building and the restrictions, I don't think there's any loss of reputation there. Most, most members of the public fully understand the pressures that businesses are under. So I don't think loss of, loss of reputation is really gonna be a significant factor. So I do think that Karen's suggestion is absolutely right.
Thank you. I'd like to take up that point. It concerns me greatly that if we close a view down and we spent four years getting the thing to work, you know, fairly well, and thanks to all Craig's efforts and the staff up there, we've got a good reputation. I'm very worried if we do close it, once we close it, we will lose quite a large slice of our customer support. You know, people are saying, it's no good going up there. It's closed, even though it might not be. So I think, you know, maybe we take that into consideration as well. And, you know, wow, it's a huge decision, isn't it? Yes, Councillor Evidens?
Yeah, I do understand those concerns. But I will say that, you know, we closed right through lockdown. And then as soon as we reopened, everybody flopped back. In fact, I think it was busier than it was pre-lockdown. So I think that actually people, the thing about this situation is when everything opens up again, or some restaurants, the Seven Sisters are not opening tomorrow. They've already said it's not economical for them to open. And they're just doing Sunday roast deliveries to people. So there's a lot of businesses, particularly in the food industry, that have said, we can't open. It's not economical because of the restrictions we're under. So we're just in the same boat as them. But also, Will, you know, at the end of lockdown, people really flopped back. They were so happy that the restaurants were able to open again. And the view actually managed to get extra business. So I know it's a concern, but I think probably we'd have a repeat of that pattern. I think people will be absolutely delighted when it reopens and would understand the gap between the tomorrow and when it does.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I tend to agree with the reputation side of things. We made, we made a lot of friends this summer. And I think they will come back very quickly. Same as functions, I think they will come back when allowed very quickly as well. So I think if we can get through till, till we're allowed, till vaccine is administered or a tier is dropped, then I think we will bounce back very, very strongly.
Yes, I think there's also a recommendation to allow the Chair and the RFO and the manager of the view to be responsible for looking into this regularly. And if the situation changes, to make decisions on opening, closing, whatever. I think that's probably a fair fallback situation at the moment. If we need to convene another meeting every time something changes, it takes a fortnight to set up the meeting. Time we set it up, it's all changed again anyway. So we need to perhaps consider that a bit later on. Councillor Cash, you wanted to?
Oh, I was just going to query what happened, what's gonna happen over the period from, was it the 22nd to the 27th? Was it 23rd to 27th? Whether it's five days? Have you got Christmas bookings that could go ahead then? Or would that not be feasible?
The mixing, the relaxing of the rules is not in hospitality. It's only in households.
But have you not got households who are going up there for their Christmas dinners?
No, we've got nothing booked at all.
Councillor Edson and then Fraser?
Yeah, I don't think that we've got any option but to do this. It's not something we want to do, but I think the circumstances have forced itself upon us. And I think the best thing that we can do is, when the light starts shining again, is to do what we can to make sure that we advertise that the view is open again. And just hope and pray that people will come back just like before, as Morag has just said. So I don't think we've got a choice, to be quite honest.
Okay, thank you. Fraser?
Yes, I mean, I think we're all in the same boat. You may or may not know, I have a, I have a pub that I'm sitting in right now. And it's the same, I won't be able to open. It's not financially viable. I don't do food. And it's just, it's crushing us down here in every part of hospitality, speaking to other restaurant and bar owners. So I can understand that it's a difficult decision, but it's a good, it's a good one, I think, personally. I think what my only concern is, is obviously, we've got golfers there. And we've got golfers there every day, come rain or shine. And maybe we could look at, I know Simon had the idea when we were talking the other day about having some sort of, potentially having a van there that's able to supply, you know, even simple things like bacon rolls or, you know, teas and coffees and things like that, that we could then potentially charge a rent for. It would sit quite happily just behind me in the pro shop there. You know, you could charge, I don't know what the going rate is for a pitch, but somebody might well take it up. And that means the view will get a little bit of income from that without having to have any outlay with regards to staffing or, you know, bringing back anybody off furlough. And obviously, we can liaise with them, whoever's in the pro shop can deal with any issues that they have or don't have, you know, with the customers. The only thing I could think of is we might need an extra bin, but that would probably be about the cause of the issue.
All right, thank you. Simon?
Hi, sorry. I just wanted to really reiterate what Fraser said. Obviously, golf's my side of things. So I think in consideration to customer support when they come back, we do need to consider that it is the clubhouse for the golfers as well. And we're discussing about memberships. If we end up staying closed until we get to a point where we're looking for 15 for 12 and renewals, no one's gonna take up a 15 for 12 with a golf club that isn't offering anything. Obviously, I understand that perhaps a normal clubhouse service can't happen. But I believe we've got nine days now booked up fully with golfers, nine days from now. So I think that is a consideration with regards to what we can provide them, whether it be teas, coffees, bacon rolls, like Fraser said, something to encourage golfers to still wanna come to us to enjoy their game.
Okay, thank you. Georgia, I think you were looking into that, weren't you?
Yes, Chair, I did have a discussion with our projects and facilities manager, just to kind of pre-warn him that obviously, if the view wasn't open, it may be an option that the committee wishes to look at. So he did have some initial ideas. So it certainly is something that we can look to do. You know, like has been said, we think we could probably look to get hot drinks and maybe bacon and egg rolls or, you know, just kind of basic food to be offered. So hopefully, there should be an option if needed.
Okay, that sounds like a good idea. Karen and then Councillor Levendon?
I was just going to say the same as Georgia, Chair.
Right, thank you. Councillor Levendon?
Yeah, I really think that a concessions van of some sort up there is a really great idea because you get a lot of walkers, dog walkers and fitness walkers up there. You may be able to drum up some, they may be able to get a little bit of business from there. I don't know what your booking system is for when people want to come up. Because I assume you have a booking type for teeing off at the moment. And I don't know if you have a disclaimer that people click on at that time to say that it's not a mixed household or anything like that. But we could also put on there that they could like pre-order like hot food or a roll or a drink in advance. And that would give anyone doing a concession a sort of ballpark idea of what the uptake of that is likely to be. So that they can, because obviously, we want to ask someone to go up there. And then it's not a viable option. But something like that, when they book, they could also book a breakfast to collect from the van, might help sort of narrow, sort of give us a statistics on how popular that idea might be. I don't know.
Right, Fraser, you'd like to come back on that booking?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, I think, I think it will be popular. When we were shut down last time, I think it's a slightly different issue that we had in the first lockdown because originally, there was no going through the drive-through or anything. So there was zero where it'd be quite that amount. But I think if it was there and if it...
You're breaking up a bit.
Sorry, it's not the greatest, really good internet I've got. If it's there, I think it will be popular. It's gonna be weather dependent. But then if somebody's on their own, you know, own fruition is in a van, they can, you know, if it's chucking down with rain, they can pack up and go home. I don't think they have to stay there all day, every day. And we can maybe adjust the rent accordingly, making it weather dependent. I think we've got to make it as desirable for them to be able to give a facility for us. But obviously, not, you know, still, still take a little bit of money rent. We don't want to give it away for nothing. And I think, I think, I think it would be used, especially for hot drinks, because the amount of people were asking for it when we were in original lockdown was tremendous. You know, we could have, I was nearly, nearly gonna get a hob on my counter to start making bacon rolls. It was that, that much. So I think, yeah, I think it would be, it would work.
Can I suggest then to all of us that we put that over to the CMT, the central management team, to look into and come up with a solution? Is everybody happy with that? That's outside of the sort of discussion at the moment. Yes, you're all okay with that? Okay, yeah, nobody's sort of anything against it. Okay, you've got a job, Georgia. All right, can we put the recommendations up again on the screen, please? Are there any more questions before we continue? I think we probably crushed it to death by now. Councillor Adam?
Thank you, Mark. Mark, you mentioned a bit earlier around delegated authority, around potential decision-making over the months ahead, given how dynamic things are. I'm not quite sure where that decision point is in the meeting start. Are we deciding that now or is that?
I think it's in the recommendations. Yeah, I think it's in the recommendations.
Recommendations on Craig's report. So I wonder where it was in the meeting.
I've seen it somewhere, written down.
Yeah, I've seen it somewhere too, Mark. That's why I asked the question, Mark.
Sorry, Chair.
Okay, well, we need to, yeah.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, sorry, I think that was in the email that I sent round to the committee and officers. I said about, so it was kind of the two additional things to be discussed tonight, wasn't it? So it was the operations during December and then the delegated power. Because as it stands, officers only have delegated power to progress through the couple of options that the committee agreed at its last meeting. And that doesn't allow for officers to change opening hours, close on any days, change menus, you know, it's very restrictive. So the recommendation I put in my email was really just a much broader delegated power to allow us to be much more reactive. And obviously, it would be in consultation with the Chair. But what I can do, if you'd like, is copy and paste that wording into the chat functions so everyone can see it.
You would do that, please, Chair, so we can see that, because we need to consider that.
So that will be the third recommendation. So you've got the two on the report.
Okay, so we've got delegating power to the town clerk, RFO and general manager in consultation with the Chair of Golf in the View to change the operational hours and arrangements of the business throughout December 2020, January, February and March 2021, just being reviewed at the committee meeting plan for the 9th of March 2021. So we need to add that to our recommendations. Can we see the other ones that are in the report, please?
They're in backwards order now in chat, but you've got numbers one, two and three, the recommendations.
Okay. Everybody see those? So they're the three recommendations that we're going to vote on. I need somebody to propose that we accept those three recommendations. Councillor Cash, seconded by councillor Rahner Mahida. Everybody in favour? Anybody against? Any abstentions? Okay, that's carried. All right, well, that's the end of the agenda items at the moment, I believe. Nothing else on the agenda.